Ryan Beck Planning Board for November 17, 2020 to order. The first item on the agenda is the continuation of the public hearing from October 6th, the 6384 Mill Street, the construction of the Hub Hotel. And we don't have to open it again because it still is open. We received five letters over the last two weeks and they'll be part of the record from a Joyce Meyer and a H Dam and an Emily Dam and a James Berry and a David Mayer. And Deborah Benny, Kenny, it's hard to read her handwriting from Wertenberg wrote. So these six letters will be going into the record. And they're all positive recommendations of the hotel. So who would like to begin? We have, I think our engineer had questions that he felt were not quite answered.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So we did receive a letter from Lawrence Paggi, the applicants engineer on November 6th. Upon review, there were several items that we felt were not complete for the site plan application, specifically speaking utilities, concept plans for utilities, electric storm, sanitary, all of the above. And with that, also the topography information. I know there's a drainage issue on site, so we were concerned with improving that and what the applicant's plan was to improve that. Additionally, for the site, there was some comments we had on ADA signage bringing up to the current New York State. Dynamic symbols, signage requirements were not shown on the site plan. And then we did have some comments on the vehicle tracking for the fire apparatus and the refuge truck. And we put together a draft letter that we are going to provide to the applicant's engineer for further review, but at this time, we truly believe it's not a full site plan application and recommend further review and pushing this out to December.
In addition, John Clark had some questions that he felt were not answered yet. John wants to make his comments.
Yeah, there's, there's a list of comments that I made over the last few meetings that still haven't been addressed, so I thought I'd go through them one, once again, the ones that are remaining. The street trees, and I know that we have representative of the tree committee here, but the two tree trees that are placed out front, one of them is too close to the driveway, or the exit driveway. I think I recommended in the past that both of them be moved further to the south so that they were in the public right of way, but give adequate site distance from that exit drive that there may be one in front of the building and one in front, south of the, of the proposed location of the tourism building. Also, I suggested last time that the tree be taller than it is. It's on the landscape plans, they're talking about five to eight feet, or five to seven feet, I think it was, and I think they should be six to eight. They're in a vulnerable location, so they should have a better start to establish. And the proposal was five to six feet, I said six to eight feet last time. The ADA spaces in the back, the proposed ADA spaces, they're striped out at nine feet and the aisle is nine feet, they could be all eight feet, which is New York State regulation, and that would give you an extra three feet for that maneuverability area right behind the building, that aisle, driving aisle. I think that going from 20 to 23 feet would be a benefit. The applicant said that they were going to provide curb stops in front of the light fixtures in the rear. Those aren't shared on the plan, they're shown in the details, but not on the plan. The transformer, it seems to me, everybody's agreed that that should be relocated to the southern property, but we have no, as far as I can tell, agreement, written agreement or any other sort of agreement from Frontier that they'll allow that to happen. They, the Frontier and the fire department may also be involved with, there's an existing tree near the southern driveway that the fire department wanted to see at least trimmed. So I think that should be at least discussed in the site plan, whether that's necessary or not, to provide headroom for the fire truck to get into that southern driveway. On the site data table on, on the first page, it has the proposed side yard setback at 11.6 feet. As I said last time, it's actually 17.5 feet or something thereabouts, so that should be corrected. We talked about a, some sort of mountable curb for the patio, so it would delineate the space, but still allow trucks, if they needed to clip that corner to go up on it and down, but they wouldn't want cars to pull in there and park or assume that that was a drivable space for normal vehicles. I would suggest to the board that we should eliminate the option one, option two for parking. What they're proposing is a retail space, not a half retail and half restaurant, so I'm not sure why we are including that on the site plan. It seems to me we should approve it for retail, and if they come back and want to do a restaurant, they would have to come in for a special permit anyway, so we would go through and revise the parking count at that point. I think it's just confusing at this point as to what being proposed. So I would recommend that we just leave option one on here and take option two off if it's not being actually proposed for this approval process. There's no indication of what the ground cover will be in front of the building. There's some boxwoods hedge, but it doesn't say ground cover or grass or whatever. I definitely want landscaping rather than what's tends to be these days, people throw riverstone everywhere, I want to see green space, since it's a very limited amount of green space left on the site. On the architectural drawings, which we didn't get any updated as far as I know, we talked about the air conditioning grills, we're only on the south side of the building. I wanted that confirmed that there weren't going to be any on the south side or the front or the back of the building. Whether the trim was going to be painted or just left as a solid material. I wanted to note on there that the mountains on the window would be on the exterior of the glass. And I suggested in the past that the storefront cornice be as prominent as the roof overhang, so that it doesn't look like, that it's not as prominent and doesn't provide enough break at the storefront level. So those are my comments, that all of those, as far as I can tell, were something that I brought up before and haven't made it into this site plan version, and I want to see either a response why you can't do it or a change in the site plans.
May I ask a question, Mr. Clark, about the tree? I was under the impression that the tree the fire department was talking about was on the lands of Greenoff and Bates, and we did provide a letter from them.
Yes.
Agreed to have the tree trimmed.
Now, this came up with the discussion of the fire company, they questioned the tree, I think it's a locust tree that's close to the southern entrance, the entrance to the one-way system. It's very close and they questioned that, so I just wanted that checked out to see whether that need to be trimmed back or whatever.
Okay, and then as far as the Central Hudson Transformer, you do have an email from Frontier agreeing to the site plan. I think I've said in the past, the transformer is serving the Frontier building, but I mean, if you want something more formal, then you know what they've already provided, we can do that.
Well, they've agreed in getting this, I just don't remember seeing that.
Ryan should have it, they sent an email.
Okay.
Victoria and everyone else, we have a new recording secretary who was having trouble identifying the specific people, so if you're not a member of the board, when you say something, could you say, this is Victoria Paladera, this is Warren Temple Smith, so the secretary can get the minutes correct, because it's harder to do it on Zoom. We don't have a report from the tree commission, but we do have Meg Crawford here. If Meg would like to talk about the trees that she was considering for the front of the hotel. Meg? I saw her there before. I don't know, anyway.
All right, David, you want me to go?
Yeah, well, I just hope whatever tree is picked, it has a high canopy, so that, you know, I agree with.
No, we'll get back, yeah, we can get.
All you see is the trunk of the tree and not all foliage, to make it easier for somebody exiting the north driveway. Yes, John Fenton, next.
Okay, so with respect to what John Clark said, I think we're going to need Robert to definitely check into the ADA dimensional requirements for parking and access aisles. That's got to be very specific. And Robert, did you speak to anybody from the DOT with respect to the planting buffer with the species of trees and the visibility? Was anything ever brought up on that?
John, you're talking to me, correct?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I usually go. It's all good. So yeah, I did speak to two gentlemen at the DOT, the review, initial reviewer Frank and the permit engineer Joseph Taylor.
Okay.
Yeah, Frank was reviewing the project for safety and vehicular traffic from a DOT standpoint, and that was not brought up as an issue. They have these plans, they reviewed them, but, but I can certainly see how placing the tree at a lower level would, would be of concern. And so just to note, it wasn't brought up by the DOT, but I agree with the village.
Yeah, normally what happens is, and it's always after the fact, you know, the plantings and right before we issue a CO, the DOT will chime in and say that there's a visibility issue, so.
Yeah.
Let's tackle that first. And then the other thing was, Christian Paggi, if you could take a look, I know that there was a request for a waiver with the proposed drainage on site. And we, presently, we have a drainage issue on Route 9, which is located on the northbound exit of the site. And it's just, it's on the corner, when you make a right-hand turn going north onto Route 9, that corner right there, there's some serious drainage issues, a lot of pooling. And so I wanted you to take a look at that, because I have a feeling with the excess drainage runoff off the building, it's going to accumulate even more at that location.
Okay, yeah, we can, we can definitely. Issue at the, there's a drainage inlet and there's bonding that happens there. We have been, we need to actually get into that basin to see why the water is not draining out, whether that's a drainage seepage pit or dry well, or if there's a pipe connection upstream in the CVS parking lot. But, so that all needs to be evaluated. The, the reason for the waiver request is, first of all, that drainage basin has been flooded for the past at least month, so we haven't been able to really get in there. I mean, we, we need to, we could get in there and get a back truck in there and pump everything out, but the main, the main point for the waiver request is that this is an existing parking lot. The entire site with a small exception of this, the little bit of greenery in the front is already paved over. We, we will not really be increasing stormwater runoff or any impacts to any significant degree. So any, any changes or remedial work that we do to the drainage will really be underground and will not be affecting the site plan. I mean, but we're happy to work with the village to make sure that, first of all, we clear up any drainage issues in the subject property, and if there's opportunity to also either alleviate or make sure that we're not exasperating any issues out on Route 9, we'll obviously do that, too. The, relative to the trees, the reason, I will be forthright that this plan is the exact same plan as far as the planting plan that you guys have seen in the past. And I should have noted that in our letter, just to make it clear that that was intentional, that we didn't change anything. I know that John Clark requested us to move some trees and to revise the tree size. We were waiting to meet with the tree commission and also waiting to hear back from Dutchess County Transit Authority regarding the bus stop, to see what the impacts would be of modifying that buffer area in front of that bus stop would be. So we did meet with the tree commission last week, and I know that Meg is here, and hopefully we can have a discussion and try to come to an agreement on what, what the board would like to see out in that buffer area, because there, I think there are a few things that need to be discussed. But that, that was the reason why nothing had changed. We wanted to make sure that we met with the tree commission, had a response from the county transit authority, which we did, they, we just submitted that today, we got a response from them this morning, that they, they did not have any concerns with eliminating that, that paved kind of awkward ramp area, they did not need that for the bus stop. So they were completely fine with returning that to a vegetated buffer area, as long as we create a four-foot wide walking path from the sidewalk to the curb that people could use to get from the bus stop to, to the bus and make it handicap accessible. So, so I do, I do think that we need to have a little bit of discussion today with, with both the board and also Meg from the tree commission to finalize what, what the board would like to see in that buffer area. The, regarding the handicap spaces, I thought that I had modified those to eight feet. I'll, I'll go back and verify that those, those were actually modified to the correct dimension. I'll revise the dimension, that 20 foot is obviously incorrect if that was modified. And I'll dimension those spaces just explicitly on the plan to make sure that there's no confusion as to what those handicap spaces should be. And same with the, the bumpers, those curb stops, we will add the curb stops, we added a detail, and for some reason, the detail, the parking on the site plan didn't show up, showing the few curb stops along that rear side of the parking lot to protect those existing light poles. So.
We had a question from our new board member, Jeff Christensen, about the patio area. He was concerned about it. Jeff, are you there?
Yes, hi, this is Jeff Christensen. I, as David points out, I'm a new board member, but I have been following this, this project in previous meetings. Ryan, could you go to page two and show the apparatus movement plan diagram for the fire truck? Yeah, the one below this, I believe. Thank you. So, and, and as John had also, as John Clark had mentioned earlier, there's a, there's a good part of the proposed patio that is in the path of emergency vehicles, and in this case, it's the fire truck. You will not ever be allowed to put anything in that location anyway. So my question to you is, why not modify the footprint of that patio? Because I think it could be an issue in the future if people forget this and put a table in that location, et cetera. Might be a question for, for Christian or maybe even Warren?
Yep, and, and so the patio, those pavers are going to be traffic rated pavers, as long as the, anything in the, the path of the emergency vehicle is not permanent. So I, it's my understanding that a table or some chairs would be able to be there because they would be able to be readily moved if needed, or.
Yeah, I, I think, I think in an emergency and in a fire, I don't think that's something we would want to tolerate, that somebody has to remember to move tables and who knows what tables people put in there, who knows what type of umbrella support, concrete weights they put under it. I just think that the path of an emergency vehicle should be free and not subject to somebody remembering in the heat of an emergency to move furniture.
And would there be a curb there?
If anything, there would be a slight mountable curb just to delineate the separation of the traffic aisle and the patio. There would, I don't think, we wouldn't be able to put a true curb there, but some sort of low-profile mountable curb to really serve more as a border and define separation between that traffic aisle and the patio area.
Well, the traffic aisle cuts through a third of the patio area, so are you saying you'd put a traffic, you'd put a traffic curb in the radius shown on the building, on the, on the diagram here?
The, the curb would go around the patio.
Okay, well, again, that, that, that's, in my view, that's a patio that people are going to kind of forget what they shouldn't be forgetting, and either you're going to need to delineate the area of the patio that nothing can ever be put on, which I think would be pretty ugly, or rethink the patio. Is there a reason you can't put it on the south end of the building if you want to put seats out there?
The south.
South end is Frontier's property.
Okay, well, I think I, I'm not, I'm just not comfortable with furniture being on a, on an emergency vehicle path.
I'm going to make a suggestion, because I think there's value to having that patio squared off, so that it doesn't become just more asphalt from the parking lot and someplace somebody's tempted to park it. I like to see as little asphalt as possible, what's necessary, but not, so I like the pavers. You could put a perimeter line in the pavers. So that it extends out past that perimeter line, but the condition of site plan is that no temporary or permanent obstructions are put within that perimeter line, so you can have a line going through the pavers that the owners would know that this is beyond their ability to block, and that way you get maybe the benefits of both.
I think that would be a great solution, John.
Yeah, plus, yeah, so that's, I don't know, trying to read what that note says in front of the frontier, is that a concrete walkway or something else? They could pull up over that, and the handicaps parking spaces can be eight feet with eight-foot aisles, I know that.
That's an overhang, I believe.
Allow the swing to be a little wider, but the point being is, I think you could get the benefit of that, and we could put it in as a condition of site plan if that's okay with the applicant.
Christian, is that turn one motion?
Nope, it's, it's two motions, it was, it's intended to reflect the actual maneuver that the fire department did out on the site with their ladder truck. So it's, it's, it's pulling in and it's actually doing a, there's a, it goes in reverse right at the corner of the Green, the Greeno and Bates property. So it's, it's a, it's basically a three-point turn.
When we were out there, it didn't seem to be that far into the patio. For some reason, I thought you just kind of caught the corner.
So the, the computer-aided circulation programs are significantly more conservative than, than real life, basically. If you have a driver like the, the fire chief who is really skilled and has been doing it for that long, I mean, he pulled it off with no problem and there was plenty of room. The, to be able to get it to show that with this computer-aided design, it's just not going to happen, it's just too conservative. So that's, that's another reason why we think that the, the request to not have any patio furniture out on the patio is somewhat unreasonable. While I, while I understand the, the reason for it, the, I mean, John, you were out there, the fire department was able to make that maneuver relatively easily, they almost made it in one sweep. So, and if we were, if we were to draw a line based on this, the computer-aided maneuvering, it would be unnecessarily restricting that patio area, in my mind.
Just one quick comment, you do not have any parking delineated on the telephone company parking lot. Where, you're assuming that this looks like this, this is just an empty space when the fire truck comes through. Where are the stripes for the Frontier parking? Block some of this.
We can add those, I mean, the, the reason why I removed those is because they are shown incorrectly on the survey. They, on the survey, they're shown as perpendicular spaces and out on the site, they're actually angled spaces, and there's a no parking stripe right at the top corner of the, where the patio would be. So we could, I could go in there and show those stripes, but this is, again, we were out there with the fire department and we, we ran this with a fire truck around those spaces.
Okay.
With plenty of room, but I can add those if the board would be more comfortable. I tried to show it as light of a turn, so it would be clear that there would be no parking spaces impacted.
Okay, good.
Mr. Chairman, do you think it would be beneficial if, I don't know, that the fire chief weighed in on his opinion as to what to do in this particular paver area?
He's leaving that up to me, Craig. I spoke to him, I spoke to the fire chief and he has no problem me speaking on his behalf.
Okay. Does he, yeah, but the, the comments that were, were made by Jeff were not, they would need to be addressed.
Yeah, no, his position hasn't changed. I mean, I understand Jeff's position on this, but you know, it was more aesthetics than anything. The mechanics of it is, it's doable. The, the drawing isn't accurate, it's not that far into the patio.
It's not the scale.
No, definitely not the scale. So, and Christian, myself and the fire chief were on site and it was pretty, it was a pretty easy move. So I mean, the drawing doesn't do it justice.
That may be the case, but if we're saying the drawing isn't accurate, then we need an accurate drawing, because we're making decisions here on emergency vehicle access.
It's not that the drawing isn't accurate, it's just that the drawing is overly conservative, and that, that's just because of the, the way that the, the computer-aided maneuver software works. I mean, we, it's based off of specific radiuses and the, the axle widths and assumed, assumed speed. So there are certain parameters that, that it is, it's going by and it's by design conservative.
As well it should be, because it accounts for people that may be as professional driver as the chief himself.
Exactly. I would not disagree with that.
Yeah, so I wouldn't, I like John Clark's suggestion that if the patio is maintained, that there be an outline in pavers that show where no furniture, planters, anything can be placed on the patio.
Anywhere?
No, there's, there's a bunch, there's a lot of spaces on the patio that, that the truck appears that it would not be close to. Most of them look like they're in front of the door, so I don't know if they'd want to put, maybe they don't want to put planters where those planters are shown, maybe they want to put two tables right up against the building, and that would be fine.
So you want to put a condition on the site plan?
Yes.
Yeah, I like what John Clark suggested.
Yes, John Clark's, John Clark's condition.
You know, sort of a no-fly zone for tables, chairs, planters or anything, and that will make, means.
And that will make, means definitely be able to make that turn, but the patio will be there instead of asphalt, which will make John Clark happy.
Much more aesthetic.
I mean, for a, just to put it in perspective, when you have a, an emergency access road, those roads are usually gated off and there's a knock box. You know, the, so that's, it's something where, this is no real, this is not really different from that type of situation. If there is something that's not permanent in the way that can be moved by either the fire department or someone on the site. Very similar to an emergency access road that's gated and, and has a lock that only the fire department can, can get into and needs to unlock. So I don't, I don't see this as creating a safety issue. And I, I see the request as being unnecessarily restrictive of the applicant.
Okay, well, that's my request. What you're doing is you're, and there may be cases where there are gates and they have to get around things, but those are probably existing conditions. What you're doing here, if you insist on putting furniture and planters and anything there is you're introducing an obstruction. It's not there now.
No, the gates, the gates, if you were to do a development, a residential development and need to provide a secondary access for emergency vehicles. That would be a road that's only traveled by emergency vehicles. It would be gated off to prevent any other traffic through it. And it would be locked and there would be a lock, a key for the department to, the fire department to actually unlock the gate, open it and actually go down the emergency access road. It's something that you, you would be creating, it wouldn't be in an existing condition.
Christian, I hear your opinion, I just don't agree with it, so we should probably move on.
We, I think it can be addressed though in some type of language that the applicant would heed to the opinion of the, of the fire department chief. In the event that a field condition or there's an obstruction that prevents the turning of the, of the emergency vehicle from occurring. You know, I don't think that, that it has to be, you know, as restrictive as suggested. And I think it, it should be based on, on field conditions at the time.
John Fenton, is the, the fire engine here is not just for the hotel, it's for Frontier Court Fire, there was a fire in the back of the Amsterdam or something, it's getting the fire truck back there.
Right.
And, and the fire hydrants are out on the street?
Yes, they also have a tanker. So it all depends on the situation, but.
So this turn that we made would be after the fire is over, that they'd be leaving the area. They're not rushing in with
No, they're, they're, they're positioning the rig to address the fire and then they just want
Anywhere back there and then they'd be leaving, so, okay.
Yeah, I mean, so the thing is, I mean, we just wanted to see if it could take a, see what the turn radius is. We don't know what, what, you know, what kind of position the truck's gonna be in during a fire, during an event. But it's definitely able to get in and out of the site, so.
Okay, well, is Meg Crawford with us? I saw her face pop up.
I am here, I just don't know if you can hear me.
We can hear you.
Yes. Great, okay, good. So I did meet with Christian, there were quite a few concerns I have that don't seem to be totally determined yet, that were on the streetscape that will determine where the placement of trees are gonna go eventually. Things like the lion's box, the phone booth, the actual location when the Chamber of Commerce building tourist booth is moved. Where the sidewalk for that tourist building is gonna actually end up going to meet the front door. All those things really need to be placed on a map and decided before you can place trees in the median that they're gonna create judiciously. So that's one thing I have to comment on. The other thing.
Could you just explain, could you walk everyone through the locations of those advised, locations as shown on the site plan?
Okay, so the locations of the lion's box, the phone booth, the sign, there's a sign there. They're all to the south of the exit, I guess it will be the exit driveway on the north side of the building.
Yes.
And
We are showing those on the plan now, so we show those as being, there's, what's shown now is the proposed relocation of those features. And on the site, the existing conditions plan just below this shows the existing location of those features. So we are showing all of those to be either, either remaining or to be relocated.
And don't, don't forget about the ramp that needs to go down from the sidewalk to the bus. You know, somewhere in the sidewalk, there needs to be a cut there, okay?
Absolutely. And it doesn't need to be a ramp, it just needs to be a four-foot wide, flat sidewalk.
Right, yeah.
So that the bus, so the bus, if they have, if they need to lower their ramp, that there'll be something to, that they can lower it to for handicap accessibility. So we'll, we'll show all of that. We just got the response from the county this morning and I was just able to meet with Meg last week. So they didn't make it onto this plan and that, that's why I kept the planting plan, as you guys had seen it before. I didn't want to take the liberty of making any changes prior to meeting with Meg or hearing back from the county. But we did add those existing locations of, you know, the phone booth, the bench, the signs. And we are showing them being relocated at, at different spots on the site plan. So that we can have a meaningful discussion on the, the buffer area, the tree location, the types of trees and all of that, so.
So the question I had for Meg was, the trees that were planted across the street in front of M&amp;T Bank have leaves that go all the way down to the street. And it would be best for sight view from somebody coming out of the exit there, that the trees have a higher canopy so that they don't, you know, block the view of traffic coming up the street.
You know, I would not recommend those trees again. What I would recommend is taller trees than the cherries. Because I don't think they're at all in scale with anything else on that street and I think a taller tree would be much better given the scale of the building. And also because a taller tree gives you, you can raise the canopy more on a taller tree and have visibility. And also that would be beneficial for anybody staying at the hotel to be looking out at the trees, the canopy of the tree as opposed to the streetscape, in my opinion. So I would, go ahead.
I was gonna ask you to suggest a species on the, which is taller.
I'm sorry, would you say, Victoria?
I'm sorry, I was just gonna ask you to make some suggestions.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I think, because I've been thinking about trees a lot, when the locusts aren't around anymore. You know, I think a better tree for that area would be zelkovas, which hold on to their leaves longer. There was one planted, that you had planted in front of the gas station. And, you know, they have a vase shape, they can be pruned quite high, the canopy can be pruned quite high. And they have lightened up branches that I don't think they're gonna disturb the cable wires so much, you don't have electric wires on that side. So the tree that you choose will be, you know, if it's a taller tree, will be going through those cable wires like the other trees on the street are. But I think that would probably be your best bet for a tree.
Thank you, Meg.
And I also really wanna recommend that when they replace the sidewalk and put in grass in the median, whatever they're gonna put in the median between the trees, that the sidewalk and that area be underlaid with structural soil. It's really critical for the trees' benefit and also so they don't buck sidewalks in the future. So it was done with the trees in front of the church when that sidewalk was replaced. It was also done across the street where the trees were planted in front of the old M&amp;T Bank.
Hey. I have, everyone else has finished, I have a couple of questions just to review. We got the letter from Transportation Department, they were happy with the pad for the bus to land. The DOT said they'd be, you just have to apply for a permit before construction begins, and I think DOT was clear. I saw a draft of, an agreement with Frontier and I saw a draft of an easement of the parking across the street. Have both of those been finalized and signed by the appropriate people?
So Frontier has agreed to the license agreement and, you know, we're ready to finalize the easement, but we were waiting to see if your attorney had any comments before we had them executed.
Yeah, I, and I responded to you and the board that it was fine as to form and content. We just needed the schedules that go along with the proposed instruments.
So we'll get that together and get it over.
That could be a condition of site plan approval, subject to legal.
All right, so I mean, we're continuing the public hearing, but we can, we could hear from the public on December 1 after we get all these questions answered, I hope. Any more final comments from the public and final comments from us, if we can get this squared away on December 1, you know. The ball's in your court, Victoria.
We should open up in public comments tonight, because Bill, there's a public hearing and people might be here tonight.
I agree.
All right, is there anyone?
I would like to just say a couple of things before we go to the public. Currently on the plans, you can see arrows for entrance and exit, they're currently on that spot nor on the plans. There are no signs that indicate one way in and one way out, and I've witnessed cars going in on the north because there's no signage that says that they can't. So I think that needs to, to be included as signage for safety reason. And I'd just like to agree with John, a couple of meetings back, he, he made comments about a, you know, a much more detailed cornice. And, you know, I look at what Warren did with Connie Patrick's house and how there's really good, you know, moldings along the top of the building. And then we had Buddy Rogers' house where they had it and it was taken off. And what's there is just, you know, not what we asked for, so I would like some, some good cornice details. And lastly, Warren had given a demo on the gables at the top and there was a gable dormer, maybe it's called a Dutch dormer, where it's a slanted roof. My own preference is for the slanted Dutch dormer, but you know, that's something we can discuss at some point, but I just wanted to put that out there. Those are my thoughts at this point.
Ryan, do we have any members of the public who requested to speak tonight?
I had no specific request to speak. There are members of the public here. I haven't received sort of any hands up or anything like that or any notes or in the chat feature. So if any member of the public would like to speak, please state your name and your address.
Hi, Kirsten Green, 249 Berger Road, Ryan Beck, New York, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. I wasn't sure exactly, I couldn't follow the architectural terms that Michael G was talking about there, but I believe I mentioned last time and I just wanted to mention again that architecturally, I look at the front of this building and the 3D design that they did. And it doesn't really seem to match the fabric of the other buildings along the road. So for me personally, I, I just don't think that we've nailed the front of this building to be flowing from the other buildings, so.
Ryan, do you have an elevation you can show us?
I'd have to, I'd have to look, or if someone has it faster than me, I can stop sharing and they can share their screen.
Warren, do you?
Yeah, I should be able to share that, sure. Let me just go down to the That's a view of the side from the northwest.
If, there we go, I think it's in that section somewhere, that. And then if you look at it from, if you go down one more to show the other side.
Warren's having bandwidth issues, there you go.
Up, up one, oops. Just back to the 3D colored screen showing the other buildings on the block, yeah. Right, so just for me personally, and I, I just think this sort of sticks out like a sore thumb with the two windows protruding at the top with their roof peaks and then the peak of the roof compared to looking down the block towards the brick buildings. So I just thought I would add it.
Warren, do you have any comments?
We thought this was entirely appropriate for the type and scale used for the building. The building further up, three-story brick building is a big block. Then we have a, a house, you know, two-story wood house with a gabled roof, obviously earlier. Two-story brick building with a slightly raised cornice and really we're picking up on the cornice line of that building. Sure, this is a third story, so we have a gable side to the street unlike the real estate office that's further south that has a gable facing the street, but for a three-story building in the middle of the village, I think actually it's very
Yes, Warren, if you stop sharing, you might clear up.
Well, wait, before you stop sharing, just note that what you're seeing from this angle isn't entirely true because the building's going to continue to go back with a roof line that is not matching to the front. So it's almost like the front is a fake, because it's really a three-story building all the way back in a big block, but then the front is this peak thing. So that hasn't been actually 3D'd in here, because you can see those cars behind that tree, that would be a building, an extension.
The building is shown, the building is shown running back from the front, it changes materials behind the brick.
Those cars would remain, that parking lot is going to remain a parking lot to the south of the proposed building.
Okay, so maybe just the, the realism of it isn't coming through as well, that that's actually part of the brick building. But that's okay, I'm sure you guys have thought about this and, and that's, I just thought I would bring it up and see if anyone else had some thoughts. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other members in the public who would like to speak? All right, so we're gonna hold the public hearing over until December 1, Victoria.
I just, I'm not sure that we cleared up the issue with the trees and I just want to make sure that we have clear guidance moving forward. Ms. Crawford identified the type of tree that she'd like to see, but did you have any comments on the location? Earlier, John Clark said that he wanted to move one south in the village right away. And I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page about where the trees should go.
I would love to be able to, when I went to the site, I'm, you know, hoping that the crab apple that exists in the area in front of the tourist building and the large locusts can be saved. I think both of them may have to be pruned to allow for passage of people going into the building. If the sidewalk is moved more under the crab apple. And, you know, to allow for that, they may, the canopy may have to be raised a little bit on that locust to allow for the fire trucks to go through. You know, those are both healthy trees and it's gonna be a long time before you're gonna get another tree that you're planting to be the size of, close to the size of that locust, so I would like to see that, those remaining. That being said, if any kind of disturbance is done on the driveway, entry That being said, if any kind of disturbance is done on the driveway, entry driveway, in the process of this, it could have bad effects on that locust tree. So the reason I'm saying all this is the placement of the two new trees will depend a lot on whether those other two trees remain or not. I think there's still plenty of space for two trees, not just one in the median there. But the placement of those would best be done once we know exactly where those other, you know, the telephone booth and all of those other things that are in the area south of the exit driveway. We're gonna, if they're going to disappear totally, it's one thing. If they're not, and also where the bus comes in, that's going to determine where these trees are placed.
So the plans currently show where everything's going to be relocated to? And Christian, can you confirm whether the crab apple would be removed or whether it can stay?
Yeah, so I, Meg, when I went back, I looked at that and it looked like that crab apple should have plenty of room. We're only moving that sidewalk a little, I mean, a foot or two to the right or to the south. So that crab apple should be able to stay, but with, probably just with some pruning, like you mentioned, so.
Okay. So I had talked to you that day about the location of the trees. And I don't know if you placed them on the accordingly. I think you were waiting kind of to hear what was going to happen with the bus entrance. So I don't know how that affects that.
So it looks like that we should have plenty of room for both of those trees. Ryan, if you're able to go back to that one, to that first sheet.
Now, Christian, are you going to submit a new front elevation to show these additional items?
An elevation? Or, I mean, we were, we could show, we would basically just revise this planting plan and make it more detailed to show, you know, all of these, the items that are outstanding, like John Clark mentioned, ground cover, revising the location of these, these, these trees. And we need to add in a location for a four-foot wide walk from the sidewalk to the curb for that, for that bus stop. So we could, we plan on doing that. It was just a matter of getting this information, meeting with Meg and getting the information from the county. So it sounds like the, the best location for these trees would be moving the northerly tree to the south, you know, probably five feet. That's probably a five-foot diameter tree symbol, if not more, but probably five feet. So moving that to the south in front of the, in front of the building and then moving the southerly tree just to the south of the Frontier or the Chamber of Commerce building entrance, you know, probably 20 to 30 feet to the south. My only concern is, and I'll defer to Meg and to the planning board, if we add another tall tree down where the, pretty much in line with or just to the south of where that relocated Lions Club box, but again, in the buffer strip area. If that is any cause of concern to the board or to Meg with its vicinity to this existing tree at that southerly entrance, it's kind of grayed out just to the north of the 14 and a half foot dimension at that south entrance. That's the, that's the tall locust that Meg is referring to.
And the crab apple is just north of that. And I guess it would be great to be able to see a new drawing with the, you know, I mean, is this tourist building and the walkway for it, is that really where it's going to be or is it going to be further south?
Yeah, that's what I was saying, Christian. Maybe do a new front elevation showing the trees and the bus stop and the additional items.
Yeah, and the new walkway to the tourist thing. I just think, and the crab apple more delineated. I just think it's having a blow up of this area that's more exact would be a better jumping off point for exactly citing these median trees than what we've got now. It's just not.
Would a site visit be helpful?
I think it would, but.
Because a lot of the things that we're talking about locating are, we're talking about relocating a few signs, a phone, a phone booth, a bench, a Lions Club box. So there, it, it might be easier to visualize just it at the site versus trying to create a rendering and an elevation showing all of these things. I mean, we can do whatever. I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there, so.
What do you think, David? Would the board like to make a site visit to the?
I'd be glad to do that.
I'm okay with that.
All right. Well, you know, it's very hard to get a large group like this together at a specific time. If you could suggest some times, then whoever can, you know, as many members of the board can make it, will make it.
Well, you gotta be careful. You don't want to have a quorum, right?
No, we're allowed to do that as long as we don't, we ask questions of Christian, but not talk to each other.
Is that possible?
Them's the rules. Them's the rules.
All right. As long as you don't discuss the project and, you know, and deliberate.
Right. So we've done that several times before and as long as we just talk to the applicant and not to each other, we're not breaking any laws. So suggest a couple of times and people can weigh in on it and see when, as many of the board members could get there. At least we'll have some input from the board. Even two or three members can get there. Okay. Do you have any more questions? Because otherwise I would defer action on this site plan until December 1. Okay, and
You're going to also make a motion to keep the, you're going to have to make, you have to make a motion to keep the public hearing open as well.
Okay. So I move that the planning board defer action on the site plan application to 6376 Mill Street, the Hub Village Center project subject following respond to the plenary site plan comments A to G and drawing comments said responses to be reviewed by the village planning department and its professional consultants as to adequacy and completeness as set forth in the village engineer Rob Sasser's review letter dated September 15, 2020.
Well, that was last month. I just wanted to give you an example. That's all. So base it on whatever was in the record today. Right.
So we just, hopefully we'll adjourn it to December 1 and hopefully all the comments made by everybody, which have all been recorded, can be addressed by the applicant and we can, you know, work towards an end of this, of this project. Okay?
Well, the submittal date, when is that?
Well, normally our submittal date would be this Friday. We like it 10 days in advance, but since it's already there, I just don't want to get stuff to, we've got stuff today and that's not good because we wanted, we wanted to stop that in the past. Give the board time to react and time to get back to the applicant, so.
I think then we could probably offer a weekend in between and provide Monday, November 23, 2020 as a deadline date for the applicant and its representatives.
So if we should have this site plan visit this week.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Christian, are you available?
I can be available whenever the board wants to meet. I'll make myself available.
Okay.
How about tomorrow?
Sure.
Before we dive too much into everyone's calendars, I need a second on that motion.
I'll make, I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Roll poll vote, please. Michael D.
Aye.
Mary Quinn.
Aye.
Don Clark.
Aye.
Jeff Christensen.
Aye.
David Miller, aye. Okay, some suggestions for times?
I'm open all day.
I, I think we can handle this on email. I don't think this needs to be in the public forum.
Suggestions of times like the tomorrow and Thursday, you know, like tomorrow morning, Thursday morning, something like that, and see which, which has the most number of votes.
So Christian, I'll start the email chain and I'll CC the chair and the planning board members and we'll go from there.
Okay.
You want me to be president?
I think it'd be good.
Yeah. I cannot be there Thursday. I can be there tomorrow, just saying.
Okay.
Okay.
Tomorrow's good for me.
The email will have wings on it, so.
Okay. Okay. Ready to proceed?
Okay, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everybody. See you in two weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is continuing old business Station Glow of New England representing Richard Matthews, and that is for the mobile station at 142 East Market Street. Some additional signage.
So Mr., so Chairman, I had some correspondence just, just before I had to leave the office this afternoon. And the ownership have decided to go in a different direction and not proceed with the Exxon Mobil's interest of synergy signs. So I believe they are withdrawing their application and they will return if they feel that they need to add any additional signage at that location.
Ryan Fenton, did you receive John Clark's comments about the neon sign, the open sign in the window and the internally lit mobile signs?
Yeah, I was aware of that. Yes, I did. I believe Ryan is in the process of drafting a letter notification.
But, well, before that letter has to be drafted, we need to find out when those particular signs were erected because if it predates the new sign law, it's grandfathered in. There is no planning board oversight.
So can you research that?
Yes, I will pull the file. I will pull the file. Just to give the planning board some history, that was originally a repair garage. Then I believe when Mr. Matthews acquired it, he slowly transformed it into a gas station and beverage location. So we just have to get a little bit more his, history before we can issue any violation letters.
We're not going to issue any violation letters because right now, due to COVID, we have a list of zoning regulations that have been suspended.
That's true, too.
Yeah. So we'll, no, we'll take a look at it, you know, and then when everything is lifted, we can address it. That'll give us enough time to do our research on it.
True.
I was assuming they would be grandfathered, but since we were opening up again with the new sign application.
Oh, yeah. I'd hope to talk to them.
Absolutely, absolutely.
One, then, you know, we can do some research to make sure they're not in violation, but, you know, I don't expect them to have to change signage if, if they've predated the last sign law.
As far as I know, they're not going to be moving forward in any way. The rep from the sign company has asked for their check to be refunded. So I have a feeling things are on the back burner right now.
Okay.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is new business, Adriana's bridal, 19 East Market Street moving into Tua Bella's Beauty Parlor. If that's the correct term these days. Do we have the applicant here?
Hi, yes, this is Adriana.
Oh, hi. Okay. And Ryan, do you have the sign applications you could bring up for us? So is the sign the same size as the existing sign or?
No, it had, it had to go a little smaller, Chair. Sorry to cut you off, Adriana. It had to go somewhat smaller, Mr. Chairman, because it was discovered that there was some previous calculation issues, whether the former tenant is responsible for not providing the correct dimensions or, you know, so there was some calculation issue previous to Adriana moving into this low location. So I believe the math is correct now. Adriana and I have had some recent discussions about the calculations and sort of what is existing with the other tenants at 19 East Market Street and then her being the new, the new tenant at this location.
It's five square feet. Do you have the picture of the sign?
I do have a rendering. Just bear with me, guys. I have to, for some reason, my usual access is not working correctly, so just bear with me here.
I have it. Would you like me to share?
I also have it.
Okay, here we go. Can you see it?
Yes.
So my question, Adriana, are these the actual?
No. So this is actually just for scale. There should be another image that has the actual colors.
Okay, hold on. I, that's the one I thought. So give me a second here.
Thank you.
Okay. This one?
Yep, that's it.
Very nice.
Oh, thank you.
I don't want to beat John Clark to the gun, but John and all of us always commented that white is not a very good background, like it makes it look like a temporary sign, like a white or you know, sort of ivory color or something other than stark white looks more like a sign than some, you know, permanent sign than a temporary sign. If that's a suggestion, you know.
Okay. Yeah, um, it is a bridal store, so.
So white is the concept.
I mean, but, you know, I
That's the suggestion, okay.
Yeah. Um, I could, you know, I would definitely be, if I would look into maybe when I, the paint colors, choosing something that just has like a little touch of an ivory cast into it.
Oh, sure. A little off-white.
Yeah. Yeah, that's fine.
And there's no, are there lights on this sign or?
Nope. It's just going to be PVC flat.
Any other board member have a comment about the sign?
It's lovely.
Oh, thank you.
I like it.
Appreciate it.
Hopefully next June, people can actually get married.
Yeah. Everyone say a prayer.
Can I have a, a motion to approve the sign application for 19 East Market Street?
I'll make that motion, Mary Quinn.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that, Mike G.
Okay, all those in favor. John Clark.
Aye.
Mike G.
Aye.
Mary Quinn.
Aye.
Jeff Christensen.
Aye.
David Miller, aye. Good luck.
Thank you.
The shots come out quicker than expected and you can have your bevy of June brides.
Yes.
Let's hope.
Bye, everyone. Good night.
Bye. Like the next application is the 38 West Market Street, John Arthur. And that is, that's where the
Lucky dragon.
The Chinese dragon was there, the red dragon. You're not serving food, I assume.
Just on lunch.
And your sign, so you're, you're an engineering firm, a wireless company?
Yes, well, really engineering and real estate. We're a cell tower developer. We operate cell phone towers.
Now, okay, so is the sign, John and Ryan, has the sign calculation been done for this sign and it's?
Yes.
Enough square footage?
Oh, yeah. Yep.
And the like, it sounds going to be on the building?
Yes, the sign is going to be attached flat to the building as, right against the, it's going to be actually inset from the front of the porch.
Right next to Any lighting on it?
I, just, just really, as you see, that's actually our actual sign, which is on our current office. So we're really just taking that sign and moving it to this location. So it's, it's a glass etched sign with painting behind the edging. And it's a, that's the actual sign. It stands about an inch, inch and a half off the wall.
And I assume there's parking for this building because it's going to a less intense use from a restaurant to a retail business.
They're really, there's, there's no current parking. We're actually in the process of revising the, the rear of the property for that.
Oh. Well, the parking wasn't grandfathered in for the Chinese restaurant, so.
Yeah, it's less of a, I mean, it's less parking requirements.
Yes, because it's not a restaurant. Yeah. Do any board members have any comment about this sign?
I like it.
It looks good to me.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve the sign for 38 West Market Street?
I'll make that motion, Mikey.
Do we have a second?
Second, John Clark.
Hey, all those in favor, John Clark?
Aye.
Michael Gee?
Aye.
Mary Quinn?
Aye.
Jeff Christensen?
Aye.
David Miller, aye. Good luck.
All right, thank you, folks. Have a good night.
Okay, John.
Thank you.
Next thing is a rerun, Paul's Dog Boutique, coming back to Montgomery Row, 6423 Montgomery Street.
Hi, yes, I'm Sammy Shriver.
You were here before.
I was here before. We were on the backside for a long time and we moved to Red Oak while we waited for a front spot.
Oh.
Oh, okay.
So the signage for Montgomery Row is pretty well laid out. And it's going to be hanging timely signs. Do we have the, the picture of the sign, John? I mean, Brian, there it is. So it's hanging on existing pole with the existing lighting and Montgomery Row is pretty standard is what their approvals are. Anybody have any comments about the sign?
Just maybe to make it a little more off white.
Right.
We, we would prefer a little off white, but you know, if you insist on the bright white, you can do it.
Our previous sign was basically the same thing, but like
Our experience has been that the bright white looks like paper and so it sort of looks temporary.
Yeah, I think, I think it was like a little off white, the one that we like were replacing with this one. I think that's his plan.
Just a suggestion. Do you have any other comments about Paul's Boutique?
Thank you for the nice graphic. It looks very good.
Thank you.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the sign for Paul's Boutique at 6423 Montgomery Street?
Can I ask about the lighting? That lighting is already there, right?
Yes, it's the existing lighting that already got approved for Caldwell Banker, so it's
That these days, but it's, it's already there. I won't object to it, but it's sort of, as long as it's not strong lighting in there, a strong bulb in there.
No, it's currently there and it lights up every night. It just is illuminating, nothing.
Do we have a motion? Do you have a motion to approve the sign?
I'll make that motion.
Mary Quinn makes the motion second?
I'll make, I'll second that, Mikey.
Okay, roll call vote. Michael Gee?
Aye.
Mary Quinn?
Aye.
Jeff Christensen?
Aye.
John Clark?
Aye.
David Miller, aye. Good luck. Welcome back.
Thank you, we're glad to be back.
Good luck.
Okay, we have two sets of minutes from September 15th and October 6th. Do you guys have a chance to look at that?
Yes. With the exception of a couple typos, I had no problem.
They're very thorough.
They're very, very thorough minutes.
Yes. So Lou is spelled wrong on page two and Eve is spelled wrong.
Which sets of minutes of are those, John?
September 15th.
September 15th, so page two?
Yeah, in Lou, marking in Lou.
Okay.
Needs an I and Eve, which is on the bottom of page two and also on page three is E A V E, but you know, that's just for clarity's sake. I'm not trying to make a big deal out of it.
I can locate those and brush that up.
Yeah.
I haven't, since I'm new, I haven't received them, but with, with John Clark's eagle eyes, I'm sure they're fine. So I guess I just abstain then?
Yes, you would have to abstain, Jeff, because you were not present.
To have a motion to approve the minutes of September 15th. I'll second it. All those in favor, Michael Gee?
Aye.
John Clark?
Aye.
Mary Quinn?
Aye.
David Miller, aye. Right, September, October 6th.
I will say in Lou is also spelled wrong on page two, and I think for the minutes, one thing that would be nice is to have page numbers on them. So you can refer to page three or page four.
Sure, I can, I, I can make that add addition.
It might mean it's spelled wrong throughout, but it's a small matter.
I'll find it, John.
Okay.
Thank you, Ryan.
Otherwise, they were great.
They're great minutes. She's doing a great job. That, if you're out there watching this, thank you, Chrissy. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of October 6th. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Mary Quinn seconds. John Clark?
Aye.
Michael Gee?
Aye.
Mary Quinn?
Aye.
David Miller, aye. Okay, we are, we're catching up on the minutes. Thank you, it's excellent work. Anybody have any other business they'd like to talk about?
You know, I just have a quick question. When John Clark sent the email about the, you know, the big mobile sign and the horse, doesn't that like predate zoning? So it's fine, like the old pharmacy sign and lights or the painting on the side?
He's going to
Like the painting. Okay.
Some mobile station for us.
I remember when what's his name came in about the liquor story and he was going to put a new sign on there and we suggested that he, there's an external internally lit sign on the side of that building that's very old and we suggested since you're upgrading the sign application, you should bring it into compliance. I don't know if that's the legal thing to do or not, but we suggested it and he went away and never came back. I'm worried that the same thing happened here, but it just seems like we should figure out whether that's a legal thing to do. Yes, they're grandfathered, but if he's going to switch around signage, then maybe they should be brought into compliance.
But what about Foster's, you know?
All right.
The painting on the side, that, that was the same idea, that that was there, predated, whatever. So that's okay, the mobile and the horse should be okay, right?
Signs on the building are okay. It's the internally lit signs that are against the rules, so.
Well, just because you want to address one sign doesn't mean that every sign at that site is subject to conformance. You know, if Foster's decided to renovate their existing sign, then they would be required to bring that into compliance. But if they're talking about another sign on another location on the side of the building, that doesn't necessarily mean that they have to conform with all signs on that site. So, but John made a good point, you know, that, you know, we were looking into the entire site. They didn't have any accurate square footage, so we kind of looked at the entire site as a, as a whole application, which sometimes you probably shouldn't. But Ryan and I will take a further look into the code and see what exactly we have to make them comply with.
The impression that I got from this Station Glow of New England, no one came out here. No, no one visited Reinbeck, no one visited 142 East Market Street. No one, they, they just brought it up on Google Maps and, you know, went from there. I, I, I don't think there was the due diligence done. This was just something that was on a checklist from some corporate office. So I really think they just believe that it's a mobile station. You know, what comes down from corporate happens. If it can't happen, then they go away.
We did that with Ruby Subaru. Subaru wants their rules about doing things and we said you can't do that in Reinbeck and every, you know, everybody was agreeable, so.
So with John Clark, you know, it says here, all signs shall be brought into compliance within this chapter when replaced, relocated or altered by 25% or more of the material makeup of the sign. So, you know, that's, that's when you really need to bring the sign into conformity.
Yeah.
So I don't know if anybody has any other questions. I know we talked briefly about the Brogan Center.
Well, I, I sent John Fenton an email a little while back. Latua Bella put up their sign that we approved, but underneath it, they, they added the barber room, that little black one that they had put on their, their first place that we found them in violation of, so they've, they've added this, this extra sign underneath that they're new place now.
Okay.
So we'll have to remind them that they need to put, see, we, we talked to the business owner because she did bring up the barber sign when we did the site visit. We're just going to have to remind them that they agreed to having the barber sign set back 12 inches from that big bay window that's, that's there. So, you know, there, it's a new location, same business owner, but I think they just got caught up in, you know, opening a new location and I forgot what they agreed to. So we'll send them a letter. To remind them.
With regards to the Brogan Center, it may or may not be under contract, it may or may not be purchased. And again, we have, we have, I have no comment on that until somebody comes with a request for demolition permit or a site plan review or comes for a discussion about changing the village code to accommodate a multifamily, something or an artist's loft or I don't know what, but once again, I don't see any point in discussing anything until somebody sends an application into Ryan to do something.
I agree.
They have the right to act as a planning body as well and to make recommendations to the village board.
Oh, yes.
Agreement, that's, that's different, but you know, we don't only have to be a reactive body.
Yes.
In terms of the signs, there is a provision on page 17, under prohibited signs, it says, any sign which does not comply with the regulations. And then it goes down with a couple and, or which is non-conforming for more than 14 months.
So what sign are you talking about?
The mobile station.
Dent in your argument, John Fenton. The mobile signs, they would be, have been non-conform.
But the mobile station, that's like vintage. I mean, it's sort of like, remember the pharmacy, that sign was in there forever, the lighted sign? I mean, that was an old vintage sign from when they
I don't think of mobile sign as being vintage myself, but
I don't know.
So John, where is that section? What is it?
It's prohibited signs number 18 on the top of page 17. I thought that there was some sort of non-conformance thing in here. I just couldn't remember where it was, but that was
Right, right. So there was, actually, we did that. Remember when Hobson's had this sign that was internally lit and then they, they stopped working out of that site and had been abandoned?
Yes.
And then we enforced them to remove it at that time.
Yeah.
Right?
This applies because I don't know whether that was an approved as a previous site plan or was considered
Right, right.
Pre-existing sign. Depends on what you say, but it's something to think about.
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
Do the research and see whether, how long ago was that?
And I voted to get rid of the mural on the side of Foster's last time they came before the site plan.
Right.
I was over
Remember that.
I'm an anti-muralist. Anybody have any other questions? Any, I, I see Lydia's hiding out there in cyberspace. If Lydia has any questions to
Lydia, you gonna say hi, Lydia?
Oh, you put the liaison on the spot.
Oh, there she is.
How you doing?
Good, good.
Good.
Did you fall, did you fall asleep?
No.
Pick on her.
How was your first meeting, Jeff?
How was your first meeting?
Wonderful, everything I dreamed it would be.
That's good or bad?
That's great. It's a great group.
Well, welcome, Jeff.
Thank you.
Very good, we'll be meeting in person. And something to say to Lydia that this is great, that our, certainly I miss seeing everybody and being with everybody, but with the ability to share screens and look at the plans, we don't have that in Village Hall. I don't know whether Gary and you guys are working on overhead projectors or, or some other mechanisms. And the second thing is that Ryan pushes a button and we have it recorded and it goes up on YouTube, which is fabulous. We're having to pay Panda to come and record these meetings. We've never had our meetings recorded. And I don't know how we can do this with Zoom or some mechanism, when hopefully by, say, next September, we can resume live meetings at Village Hall, we can get this recorded, just like we're doing now. It's, it's great and have it, the ability for people to be there in person and also come in on the internet and attend the planning board meeting and even attend a public hearing without physically being there. To think about this over the next six months or so, and we can continue with this because it's great. It really is.
Yeah, no, we're, we're actually figuring out, we're, we're thinking about how to sort of do this on the the village board level as well, because we're about to have to go fully remote, given everything that's going on with COVID, so. Yeah, no, this is, this is something we're thinking about, so. Yeah.
Zoom is, is better. And then John, John Clark had said a couple of meetings ago, I don't think that that's the way the windows used to look. And I said, hold on a second. And I broke out, went to Google Maps, did street view of the building and said, here's the way it looked two years ago. And John said, oh, yes, those are, the new windows are the same as the old. So it's like fantastic to have, you know, the ability to do that, you know?
Yes.
You know, usually Ryan would go running into to try to look something up for us. Zoom is great.
I agree, David. It's very, it's very good for that purpose. I actually manage Zoom classes for the Bard Lifetime Learning Institute. And we do a lot of things with sharing videos, sharing presentations. We do, we do different ways of
You can figure this out for us. So when we get back, regular session, you can lead, lead the way with that proposal.
Yeah, well, we've done a lot of things there and some, some of the meetings, we have 80 people at some of the classes and it was works out.
I'm giving the talk on Friday night about boarding houses at Reinbeck. And usually after I film it, it's going to take me 120 slides. It takes me about five or six hours to edit the slides into the video. And then now I just press record and when I'm And then now I just press record and when I'm done, I upload it to YouTube or to our website and it's done. And so wow, saves me like a half a day to a day of work editing the video. And the the PowerPoint is gorgeous. I mean, the the images of people is as good as the cameras each person has. But the PowerPoint on Zoom is super high resolution with the photographs, maps, charts and everything, so.
Yeah.
Zoom is great, but I do miss the public. You know.
Right.
But they're out there watching. So anybody else have any comments? We can make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I would like to thank Lydia for just the quick response on our questions about the historic district that you posed to her. I it's like, I don't ever remember somebody being from the village board in our meetings for the last number of years and to. Actually have somebody there and to and to get back to us so quickly was was very encouraging, so thank you, Lydia.
It's been a very, very long time since we had a board member that came to every meeting, I could take stuff. Our questions, our issues back to the village board. It's great having you and we really appreciate you coming to these meetings. Out in cyberspace, you can actually come on the meeting with us.
The last person who came was Terry Gibson, you know, who became the state senator, remember?
Terry came to our meetings.
He was always there.
Well, I'm I'm happy to help.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
We knew we were in trouble when Lydia used to show up to the meetings knitting for absolutely no reason at all.
Not in defogging the French Revolution knitting.
That's exactly what I thought, David.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor, we can just do an I.
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 See you in two weeks. Tomorrow sometime at the.